I'll call this, uh, meeting of the Broken Arrow City Council to order. Um, before we, uh, proceed to the invocation, I'd like to take a moment and mention some tragedies that have taken place in our community over the last couple of days, uh, and would like to take a moment of silence in with respect to the young man who lost his life on Friday, Mr. West, and our teacher who lost his life on Saturday, uh, Mr. Anderson, and for those who are suffering in Las Vegas, if we could take a moment of silence, I would appreciate Thank you. I would encourage you to remember them in your thoughts and your prayers and our community as a whole as it works through this. Now for the invocation, Pastor Moore.
Heavenly Father, it was appropriate, uh, for us to begin with silence. When we're faced with tragedies, sometimes silence is what we need to draw closer to you, to allow you to, to lead us and guide us and bring healing, uh, to our emotions and our spirit. And, uh, Father, sometimes it's in our silence that we speak to you the loudest. And so, Father, we, we just ask that you would continue to be, uh, with those in our community, uh, who have been affected by the tragedies that we've acknowledged tonight. We ask that you be with our, our brothers and sisters in, uh, Las Vegas as well as they continue, uh, to try to make sense out of, uh, the senseless. And, uh, and we just ask that you would, uh, remind us in, in our moments tonight even as we do business, that there's a great purpose on earth for each and every one of us. In the days to come, uh, there'll be, um, politics involved and, and answering, trying to answer some of the questions and, and there'll be lots of, of people trying to, to determine how best to, to not see those things repeated that we've seen, uh, this last week. But, Father, I pray that, uh, the condition of the heart would not be overlooked. And so, Lord, be with us tonight. Uh, thank you, uh, for this group that is here, and I just ask that you would guide them and direct them as you have been, uh, in the past, uh, towards, uh, the future that you have for this community. We ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. If you would join, uh, Councilman Ro...
Parks.
Oh, sorry, I got excited. We'll do. Ro, call please.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman.
Now, if we can join Councilman Parks in the pledge.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item is item five, consideration of the consent agenda. It's my understanding that item five D needs to be removed.
Uh, D?
Five D, correct.
D. I believe so.
Do we agree on that, D?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, is there any motion in that regard?
Make motion to approve the consent agenda excluding item D.
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman.
Is this to vote on separately or is this, uh, pass?
I think they've asked it to be tabled. Is there a motion to table item?
Make a motion, will you, to table item D?
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman.
Next item is item seven, public hearings, appeals, presentations, recognitions, and awards. Item A, notification and publication of legal notice of public hearing for proposed deannexation of 36.02 acres located generally at 10900 South 209th East Avenue. Mr. Lanning?
Good evening, Council. Uh, deannexation request is definitely something that's very unusual that comes to us up here at Broken Arrow, and so we have a process that is set forth by state statute. And to educate council on those processes is why we have this presentation today and to let you know what the next steps will be in accordance to this request. Uh, the city of Broken Arrow received a formal notice of filing petition from Samuel Stokely, uh, trust for the Samuel Ray Stokely revocable trust for a deannexation of his property located in the northwest corner, or excuse me, the southwest corner of Florence, uh, and 209th East Avenue. The property consists of 36.02 acres and was annexed in the city of Broken Arrow on April 17th, 2000. Per state statute, the following must be complete before the council can take action on such a request. A true and complete unsigned copy of the petition requesting deannexation shall be filed with the clerk of the municipality before it is circulated and signed by at least three fourths of the registered voters and by the owners of at least three fourths of the property and value of the property to be detached. This process has become complete. Signed copies of the petition requesting the detachment shall be filed with the city clerk of the municipality within 90 days after initial filing of the unsigned copy with the clerk. This process has become complete. Notice of the filing of the signed petition requesting detachment with the clerk, uh, of the municipality shall be given in the same manner providing for the petition of annexation, and this process has become complete. Failure to do any of these requirements would have stopped the process, and so because these processes have become complete, we now move forward to the additional steps. So when the signed copies of the petition requesting deannex, detachment are timely filed with the clerk of the municipality, the clerk shall determine the sufficiency and the signatures appearing on the petition, and this process has become complete. The clerk shall then publish, at least in one newspaper, of general circulation with municipa, uh, municipality, a notice of the filing and apparent sufficiency or insufficiency of the petition, and, uh, this is the next step that must take place. On Wednesday, October 11th of this week, the detachment filing request will be published, or excuse me, of next week, will be published in the Wagner County American Tribune and the Tulsa Business and Legal News filing, uh, fulfilling this requirement. So, uh, within 10 days of that notice, it is a requirement that the government give notice as well that there will be a public hearing, and the public hearing is set for October the 17th. So on the 11th, that notice will also be given as well. At that time, uh, after the public hearing, council can then take action to prove, deny, or to, uh, take another, uh, process. Uh, but at this time, that is, that is the process that is being, that is happening. Does council have any questions in regards to this?
Will there be a complete, uh, description of everything from staff? That presentation is like normal?
Just like, yeah, just like we do for, um, an annexation request or even a resounding request, a full report will be given at that time.
Are there any further questions? And it appears that no action is required on this matter?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item B, presentation and possible discussion regarding C Click Fix Citizen Reporting Tool, first year in review.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. Jennifer Hooks, Community Relations Liaison. I'm excited to share about our first year of using the Action Center app, and I'm gonna get started with just, um, some basic, uh, who, what, when, where, how, and why. Um, I did mix it up a little bit, so don't get confused on the order. Um, so then I'll talk about some stats from our first year. So what is the Action Center app? Um, it is a reporting tool for citizens, and, um, I've got an image of our interface here, and the way it works is a citizen will open a new issue, and it's auto-assigned to a, a staff member in the appropriate department. The staff is notified by email, and, um, they go back in to acknowledge it, so the citizen knows that we're aware of the problem, and then they begin the investigation to find out what the problem is, and the great thing is citizens can post photos and even video. So when they're, um, submitting their issue, it also maps exactly where the issue is. They can either use their location services on their smartphone or select the location on the map. And, uh, as we investigate the problem, we can update the issue online, and each category has its own expiration date, so we do watch the issues to make sure they're not getting too far out. Um, so as we update the issue and the work gets complete, the staff member goes in to close it out, and then the citizen can respond with questions or reopen the issue if it becomes a problem again. These are our current, um, categories for issue reporting. We have 16, and we've added a couple since we launched. Uh, we may add a couple more this year. Uh, the Rose District has been discussed as a possible, uh, new category, and, you know, our typical issues that we get on the phone and other, um, avenues are always the most popular, so code enforcement, of course, is always a top monthly issue as well as things like malfunctioning lights. So we launched one year ago tomorrow. We are using a five-year agreement, which is renewable annually, um, by city council, and prior to launching, we did a lot of research. We found out that tracking issues was pretty, um, different from department to department and, um, not organized. So after we did research, we started our training, which took several months, and our user group still meets on about a monthly basis. And this is how citizens can report issues. One way is on, um, Action Center BA, that's a unique URL. They can also go to our homepage, click on residents, and then Action Center, or they can download the app to their Android or iPhone device, and hopefully all of you have the app on your phone. Next, this is why we started using, um, the Action Center app. It is powered by C Click Fix, which is the vendor, and it's really a great tool that connects residents with City Hall, especially maybe in the evening or when you're at home or overnight, um, you think about something and you don't, you know, it's past hours to call City Hall, so you can just get on the app and, and submit your issue at your own time. Um, the results, citizens are more connected to city staff, and the staff is also more connected with, um, each of our other departments. There's a couple neat features on the tool. One of them is app mentions, so those of you on social media know how you can tag somebody, we can tag each other on internal comments, so we can ask questions and track it right there on the issue. Next, we have a list of the departments that are currently using the tool, so we have users in each department that are trained and responding to issues. And here's how the first year went. Um, we're currently getting one to 200, 100 to 200 issues opened every month, so you can tell the summertime, the hotter hour, uh, months were, of course, the busier months for issues being opened. Um, so we've gotten over 2,000 as of last week. This is just on the tool. We still get phone calls, so that doesn't include anything not on the app. Um, and we've closed over 1,900, and average acknowledged time is 1.4 days. Our goal is one to two days to acknowledge the issue. Average closed time is 13 days. So you know that some categories take longer, like code enforcement, some are shorter, like, um, stray animals. Next, we have a couple of maps. I just mapped out, um, open pending issues on the left and then all of our closed issues on the right. It's a pretty neat visual way to see what's going on. I didn't really see any pockets that weren't getting any issues submitted, so that's great. I think we have a lot of, um, citizens all over town using it. So we have just, uh, we have 90 pending right now, so that's pretty normal during a month. And finally, I thought I'd end with a thank you comment from a citizen. This thank you was posted, she actually opened a new issue just to say thanks. It wasn't a comment on a closed issue. She actually opened a new one just to say thank you for a great job, um, working on a driveway and sidewalk repair. So what is next? We're gonna continue marketing and promoting the tool. We currently have, um, about 1,000 desktop users, meaning just using it on the websites, and then, uh, about 3,000 that have signed up with accounts on their smartphone. Um, we'll continue adding new users as needed in the city and changing our request categories if we need any changes there, and the vendors continually making improvements to the interface. They have a great support staff, and, um, also I have flyers and happy, I'm happy to attend any neighborhood meetings. If you guys want a demo or if you know of a group that might want to learn about the app, um, in person, let me know. You have any questions?
So from the time a citizen inputs the, the issue till there, or acknowledges about 1.4 days?
Till the cit, till the staff member acknowledges.
So the staff member that acknowledges them, is that the same person that stays with that issue the whole time?
Mm-hmm.
So that gives them a point of reference?
Yes.
That stays with the issue?
Sometimes we have to re-categorize or reassign if somebody chose the wrong category.
Right, right.
But once it's assigned, it's that one user.
Okay. So have you noticed a diminishment in phone calls and emails with this, or has that stayed?
Not so far. It's been a couple of months since I checked.
Okay.
How does the staff, uh, handle it as it's assigned? Do they just take the staff that they had and let an individual work on it? Does it take a percentage of their time? Uh, any department have to hire somebody to take care of these problems?
Um, one department did, did do some rearranging in their staffing to assign one particular person, code enforcement, um, did rearrange that, so they would just monitor because they have the biggest ticket total. But everyone else is just part of our daily work, keeping an eye on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, item eight, citizens' opportunity to address the council. Uh, no one signed up, so we will move on to item nine, general council business, nine A, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of projects to be included in sale of general obligation bonds, series 2018.
Vice Mayor, Council, Tom Cook, Finance Department. Let me start by saying y'all look very nice tonight.
Summer months are over.
Does that mean the other nights before this?
No. I just was sitting observing that you all looked very dapper.
Thank you.
You were picturesque.
No, 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 no.
It should be a photo op.
Understood, understood.
The city of Broken Arrow has authorized but unsold bonds from the authorization, the vote in 2014 of $30,140,000 remaining. Staff is recommending the sale of $18,755,000 in bonds authorized from 2014. The fiscal year 2018 budget included most of these projects in the amount of $18,425,000, so I wanted to point out what those changes are. The first is from, on Olive, from Albany to Kenosha. We're gonna defer the sale of that from 2018 to 2019 and sell all of Florence, Olive to Aspen in the amount of $3,675,000. We're gonna sell the remaining 387,500 for the land purchase and design of the new fire station instead of in 2019, and I'm referring to fiscal years, not calendar years, it's just how my brain works. Um, we're going to sell the remaining, well, all of the 325,000 for the land for salt and sand storage, and that is related to our purchase of the Windstream property. So we're gonna bundle the, the projected sale of the land for the maintenance center with the land for the salt and sand storage and include all of that in this sale. And so it did change the total amount, as I said, from 18,425 to 18,755. We have met with our financial advisors, and, um, there is not a significant change in our projected mileage, partly because our net assessed valuation grew at a higher-than-expected amount, and so that will allow us to sell more bonds now than what we had previously anticipated. So with the council's approval of these projects, um, we will come back before you, um, to set a sale date at the November 7th, 21st meeting, and then we will have the sale and award it at the December 19th meeting, and then we would close the bonds and receive the funds and have them available for use the 1st of February 2018. And I would entertain any questions, and if it's project-specific, there are lots of willing participants in the audience.
It appears that the mill rate is actually going down ever so slightly.
It has gone down, and that is very much related to, um, the increase in the net assessed value. We typically have projected, and John Wolf is here also with MFS, and he is an expert in this field, um, around 3%, and we had just over 5% in growth. So that was very positive.
Again, to separate this from the bond issue that we're talking about in the, in the future, is that these are, these are all monies that was voted on in 2014?
Yes.
And you did say that, I realize that, but just making a point for those that might not have caught that, this is not monies that the city is, is voting, this is monies that the citizens have voted.
Yes, sir.
And we take our time in selling it to accommodate, when we have time to do it, and also to keep our tax rate where it doesn't increase.
Yes. Couldn't have said it better, Jennifer.
You, the balance of the 2014, the...
The 30 million?
Yeah, of that 30 million. Would you anticipate that would be sold then in the fiscal year 2019?
After the sale, there's just over 11 million left, and yes, we would anticipate that we would sell the remainder of that in fiscal year 19, and we would hope to add to that sale, part of the authorization that we are hopeful the voters will pass next summer.
Okay. And all of the 2011 bond issue has been dealt with?
Yes, sir. That is, this is our only existing, um, authorized but unsold.
Good.
Make a motion to approve the projects to be included in the general obligation series 2018 sale.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
I have a nine B, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of and authorization to execute the fiscal year 2017-18 labor agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge 170.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. I am very happy to be before you to ask for your approval on, um, the fiscal year 17-18 agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge Number 170. We began negotiations in May of this year. A tentative agreement was reached on September 7th, and last week, the lodge ratified the agreement. So as outlined in the fact sheet, the proposed agreement provides the following changes. One is administrative revisions to the use of city vehicles and drug and alcohol policy articles within the agreement, an increase in the number of hours that may be maintained in the Holiday Bank from 160 hours to 175, an increase in union business leave from 120 hours to 160 hours, an increase in the field training officer and K-9 officer incentive pay from $30 to $40, a 2% base wage increase for all bargaining unit members effective July 1st, 2017, so that will be retroed, and then an additional 2% base wage increase effective January 1st, 2018. Staff recommends that the council approve the agreement and authorize its execution. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
We're pleased, too.
Yes. Make a motion to approve the labor agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge 170, for fiscal year 2017-18 and authorize its execution most happily.
Second.
Motion is second having been made. Is any, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
All right. Item C, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of and authorization to execute the professional services agreement with Half &amp; Associates, Inc., for the review and update to the city's comprehensive plan. Bar hot.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council. The city's comprehensive plan selection committee has interviewed four consulting firm applications this last summer and has recommended that the comprehensive plan proposal be submitted to Half &amp; Associates. This is a wonderful monumental task. Just as a way of background, we had more than 30 companies that have shown interest in proposing, uh, for this project. The committee received eight wonderful and very highly qualified, uh, proposals from regional and national firms, and it really was a difficult task for our committee to narrow down the selection group down to four. After the four were interviewed, we took a lot of time negotiating our contract that is included in your packets with Half Associates to conduct this task over the nas, next 18 to 20 months. The comprehensive plan, the, the last comprehensive plan was done about 20 years ago and has been updated at two different occasions. So this, this plan will be over the next two fiscal cycles. The funding for this project is coming through STCI funds. The first phase of this project, if approved by the council tonight, will start immediately, and the first phase is scheduled to be completed between now and June and July of 2018. Subsequent to that, and with further approvals from the city council, we'll embark immediately on phase two of the comprehensive plan, so that the funding, future funding will come from the 2019 funding cycle, as approved by the city council. The, the consultants have spent a lot of time with the staff over the last three to four months going over this contract. This is the city's sixth attempt since 1968 and, uh, in approving new comprehensive plans. It's a tribute to the current leadership and the current city council, as well as the previous city councils that have allowed this kind of a track record to develop over here. I might just say that our first comprehensive plan, done in 1968, was one of the first in the region around here. Uh, if, as you all recall, those were some of the early seven or two plans that were done that have served us very well and still provide us footing and foundation going forward to this date. Uh, with me tonight is Rick Leisner. He's the principal planner and director of planning for Half Associates, which is a company that is headquartered in Richardson, Texas, in the Dallas metropolitan area. There, they also have offices in Oklahoma City and in, closest to us, in Arkansas. Dennis Blind, the other principal who is going to be working with us, could not be present tonight, but Dennis has also been part of this project up until now. But Dennis has also been part of this project up until now. Rick is headquartered in the Dallas office. They have a fairly complex team put together to perform our comprehensive plan. They have other specialists besides planners and engineers that will be performing this task. And we'll be all hopefully fortunate to put our vision together in the future and our wishes and desires and dreams of what our future master plan over the next 20 years, for the city's next 20 years should be looking like. I might invite Rick to combine, give a few words.
Hello there. Very nice to, to be here tonight. And we're very fortunate to be in front of you all with this opportunity to work on your comprehensive plan together. Just as Farhad mentioned, the comprehensive plan has the opportunity to solicit people's dreams from across your community. We're very much, we have a very aggressive community engagement effort where we'll be talking to citizens and students and business owners and everything, and everything over the course of the next couple of years. So we're very excited about it. Just to list, as Farhad mentioned, Half &amp; Associates will be leading this effort. We have Catalyst Commercial, a group that will be focusing on economic development and real estate market analysis. We have a consultant that will be focusing on community viz and the, and the program that it is allows us to look into the crystal ball and see what type of future opportunities we're able to, to define here for Broken Arrow. Civic Brands will be assisting us on the comprehensive plan branding aspect of itself. And a firm right here out of, out of Broken Arrow, HRAOK will be also assisting us on this effort. So we're, we're very excited. We think we have an excellent team. And I think we're, we will be getting, having that opportunity to work hand in hand over these next couple of years. Be happy to answer any questions if you all might have.
Are there any questions? Glad to see you get started. Looking forward to it.
Sounds good. Thank you all very much.
I'd make a motion to approve the professional consultant agreement with Half Associates Incorporated for the review and update of the city's comprehensive plan and authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion and second having been made. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. Item 9D, consideration discussion and possible approval of and authorization to execute an amended master lease agreement between New Singular Wireless PCS LLC and the city of Broken Arrow.
Yes, sir. You may recall that the council back in August actually approved a master lease agreement with New Singular Wireless, also basically acting as AT&amp;T. As a result of some additional discussions with AT&amp;T, they had requested that we make a few very minor modifications, mainly including numbers, also refining a little bit of language. And so the legal staff was able to, to get that accomplished fairly expeditiously with the assistance of AT&amp;T and their team of attorneys. And we decided because AT&amp;T did not execute the original agreement that for purposes of record keeping, that it might be wise just to go ahead and submit it as an amended master agreement. This agreement, the term is for 20 years and does provide a number of protections designed to watch out for the city's interests. But also enable, and probably more importantly, enable AT&amp;T to bring 5G technology to the city of Broken Arrow, which is very, very exciting. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I would request that you approve the amended master lease agreement and authorize its execution.
Make a motion to approve the amended master lease agreement and authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. Item 9E, consideration discussion and possible approval of the sponsor and artist agreements for City of Broken Arrow Utility Box Public Art Program.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, Lori Hill, Tourism Department. As you recall, several months ago, we implemented a public art initiative where we've wrapped several of the utility boxes with vinyl wrap with local artists. The project was such positive response that we decided to launch it throughout the city. And we are in the process now, I've been working with staff in the legal department, to draft up a artist agreement as well as a sponsor agreement. And that's why I'm here this evening is for you all to review and approve that agreement. What that will do will allow us to help make sure that we're keeping not only the artists and local, but as well as the sponsors. Anybody who submits that artwork, it must be approved by the city manager prior to any installation. And all artwork must contain a rose theme. We did send out a RFP to various vinyl wrap companies within Broken Arrow. And we only had the one response, which was Kryptonite Customs. And they were the company that did the initial wrap of the three boxes that we have at Dallas Commercial and Broadway. And I would like to point out that these will be utility boxes. These are City of Broken Arrow utility boxes. And these boxes are located at each intersection that has a traffic light. And so those were throughout the community. And sponsors can sign up and request to have a specific box. They can work with a nonprofit and do some promotion. We just asked that all the artwork have a rose theme. So if staff is recommending approval of these two artists and sponsor agreements so we can get the project kicked off, just due to the weather changing coming in, and we're going to have cooler temperatures. So we probably won't be looking for a true launch of this throughout the city till early spring.
So when you say they're going to be throughout the community, so not just in the Rose District anywhere?
Not just in the Rose District.
But having that continued rose theme?
Correct.
Throughout the whole city?
Correct.
And then what's the cost for a sponsor?
And we are looking at $500. And all of, any of the fees will be paid from the sponsor directly to the artist. And the city of Broken Arrow is just going to be in charge of approving the artwork as well as making sure that the vinyl wrap is done correctly. And, and the company that we used is very familiar with the traffic boxes and all of the requirements that are used to get into those boxes and wrap them appropriately and the heat protectants, et cetera. So, and, but all the, the sponsors will be responsible for paying the artists directly.
I could see at some point, once they start popping up all over the place, that maybe another, other companies, once they start realizing, might want to have a chance at being a wrap, you know? Will there be an opportunity for other companies to get involved?
When you say other companies, like sponsors?
Um, no, like the Custom Craft or Kryptonite.
That's absolutely something we can look at. And maybe that's something we can look at annually.
I just, I can assume that people will start seeing them and like, wait, I do wraps.
Sure. When we sent out that initial RFP, we sent it out to about 10 local businesses. And we were very specific because we wanted to make sure we were implementing the exact same process that we already have and using the high-quality 3M vinyl wrap. And we only had the one company that responded.
Well, Chris does an amazing job.
Yeah, he does. And he's a local guy, grew up in Broken Arrow. So he's excited about the project.
So there's no timeframe on how long that artwork stays on the box?
And we do have it in an agreement that if it starts deteriorating, anything like that, that the city has the, the right to take that down. The, the process is such where if for some reason something got cut, scraped, or graffitied, they can literally pull that panel down and re, just print that same panel, put it right back up, and you'll never even know the difference. But if it does start looking worn, absolutely we'll take that artwork down. But the art has been up for several months and it still looks fantastic. So I think it's, the vinyl wrap was definitely the way to go versus having them painted.
Sure.
Does the sponsorship fee include the cost of the wrapping?
Yes.
Okay.
No, no, I apologize, no. The, the sponsorship fee, they'll pay the artist for the, the artist's fee. And then there's the wrap fee that's on top of that.
Okay.
And that's listed out whenever we work with the sponsors and the artists.
So that's separate from the 500?
Correct, yeah.
But, but that's paid by the sponsor and not the city?
Correct, yeah. Correct. No, the city, the only thing that the city is involved in right now is the city manager will be approving the artwork and will make sure that, and Chris at Custom Kryptonite knows that he has not to install anything until he receives official approval from the city.
It does look nice. I've enjoyed.
Good. We did have a really good response. We initially, we were going to do just the three boxes. But then, um, thanks to Krista Flash and her team and promoting it so well, we got a great response. So we're looking forward to it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any motions?
You know, I don't have it pulled up.
I'll make a motion that we approve the sponsor and artist agreements for the Broken Arrow Utility Box Public Art Program.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. Item 9F, consideration discussion and possible approval, approval of BAZ 1984, rezoning estates at Lynn Lane, 68 acres, R2 to RS3.
Good evening, Councilor Larry Curtis, Planning Development Manager for the city. BAZ 1984 is a request to rezone the property. That's 68 acres from R2, single-family residential to R3, single-family residential. This undeveloped and unplanted property located one quarter to one and a half miles north of New Orleans and east of 9th Street. Since the property was annexed in 1983, there have been three rezoning requests, a Plan Unit Development, PUD, request, and a decree by district court on a rezoning case. The Planning Commission, in their meeting on September 14th, 2017, concurred with staff and recommended approval by vote of 3 to 0 of BAZ 1984 subject to the property being platted. In addition to the Planning Commission recommendation, the Planning Commission, the, as suggested by staff, BAZ 19, or excuse me, 1786, that was previously approved on the property being abrogated. Seven people spoke and expressed concerns over fencing, exterior materials of homes, stormwater runoff, traffic on 9th Street, stub streets, and existing ponds on the property. These questions were answered by the developer and responses are noted in the staff report. In addition to the people that attended the meeting having questions, we also had an individual email asking for additional questions to be answered in regards to the property, including reduce, or the zoning change from RS, R2 to RS3, fencing inquiry, price of range of the homes that would be placed in the property and upkeep of the property during the construction process. An email and letter was sent in response to the individual responding in, to each question in great detail. The recommendation is to approve BAZ 1984, Estates at Lynn Lane, the 68 acres from R2 to RS3, and abrogate BAZ 1786 as recommended by Planning Commission and staff. I am here to answer any questions that you may have and concerns to this. And the applicant is here as well.
Okay, Larry, I was looking through for the, the minutes. And I guess we don't have those yet of the Planning Commission.
Correct.
Uh, but from the, the note here that they were unanimous, it was three members present?
Yes.
And they voted 3 and 0?
Correct.
Anything negative from them? I always honor and look forward to seeing those before we make a decision. Because I know they actually spend the more time with it when it comes to planning issues.
A great deal of discussion was centered on what the comprehensive plan had in place for the property. Being that this is a level two in accordance to the comprehensive plan, they had discussions back and forth over the history of the property. And that because the comp plan gave support of the project moving forward, they did make a recommendation for approval based off both staff plan and, or staff notes and also on what the comprehensive plan had to say.
And there's some adjoining property now that wasn't there before?
Yes.
That is the same R3S zoning?
Yeah, the unique history of this property, going back since its annexation, the property to the north as indicated on the map, Washington Lane was not there during the time of those previous rezoning cases. And so it was kind of out on its own. Since that time, Washington Lane has been put in place and has three associated stubs, or two associated stub streets. The Oaks is also located there in the southeast corner and has a stub street. And then there's 96th Street associated with that. One of the concerns that was raised by both the, those that were in attendance and by Planning Commission that was answered was the concern of 96th Street. It is an older subdivision that was created in Wagner County and then annexed into the city's jurisdiction. And with 96th Street, it was concerned that this new subdivision will be connecting to that. Applicant noted that it would only connect if required by city due to connectivity and continuing to have, as we have always done in our city, is to ensure that we have connectivity for safety concerns, fire, police, for connectivity for trash services, for school buses, for pedestrian connectivity. We wanted to make sure that we continue that process and have those connections. But concerning 96th Street specifically, because of the age of the subdivision and how it is, the lots are larger, it's more unique, and it's not a curb and gutter, is that staff is going to be suggesting to the applicant that, that be, that still be stubbed out to it, but it'd actually have a gate and be basically an emergency access only. So ensuring the safety connection and uniqueness is separated in between the two, two subdivisions. But safety is still a factor of that.
Okay, the difference in, in the two zonings really doesn't identify a house or what type of houses there with the lot size. It could be, still be a large house on a, on a small lot.
Right.
But will be smaller lots.
Correct. The, we actually, that was one of the questions that was asked by both the, the email that the citizen, that one citizen asked, and then also in, at the Planning Commission, was what's the difference between R2 and RS3? And in comparison, this is a preliminary plat that was done back in the day for the first phase of the project. But the real difference is that in the, and that's kind of the overall, is that the, there's about 200 lots that are being proposed as a part of the previous zoning. And changing it from RS, R2 to RS3, we gain them about between five to 10 additional lots, 10 at the most. So there's not that much more increase in the additional lots. True, the, the lots can be smaller. It does go from, the lot width reduces from 70 feet to 60 feet. But because, you know, the, the zoning code does not regulate the size of homes or the type of, the type of exterior structure, anything like that, it can range from, depending on the finishes that are associated with the project.
So is the plat that's up there now, is that the plat? Because I noticed with the prelim, the, and maybe this is a dumb question, but I've never been afraid to ask those. Is the, I notice we have the conceptual plat and then we have the preliminary plat. And the preliminary plat looks a little puny compared to the conceptual plat. Which is it?
Uh, it's actually neither. These were examples that were previously done. And the reason why that they're in there was, is, is to educate both the history to councils so they can see what, what was associated with it. So the previous plat that was shown was only the forward section, the, the western portion of the, of the property. This one is showing the entire plat of the property. But this isn't the official preliminary plat, the, the, this was a preliminary plat that was presented back several years ago and never went forward. And so this is something that the engineer has provided us, saying that we're still looking for with this example, we're still looking at this, but has not officially presented their preliminary plat yet to us.
So are they indicating that they're going to develop this then in phases?
It most likely, as we do with almost a, a number of our subdivisions, as we did with Washington Lane to the north, that was done in six phases. This one potentially, will be potentially phased out.
So how does that impact our requirement for exterior fencing of the development?
Oh, absolutely. Where this is facing onto 9th Street, which is the far, which would be your left, would be the far west side, that is a first phase component. And so that will have to be complete as a part of the development process. So the fencing associated along, along 9th Street will be, will be in place as a part of the first phase portion of the project.
Then when it moves back to the far east side, then that would have to be fenced as well?
A budding residential development per zoning code is not required to have fencing as associated with that?
I'm sorry, I was thinking that was, yeah.
Not a problem. If it was a budding commercial or something like that, absolutely. But a budding residential.
I was thinking that was kind of, I know, but it's not.
But the, the developer has indicated that he's willing, or that he is going, or hopefully going to be talking to the property owners that surround it specifically to the south that has some concerns about their equestrian activities and how that'll interact with the subdivision and be working with them on the fencing work between the two.
Okay. So a final plat will be submitted for approval?
Yes. This is only the, the rezoning request. And so that's what is being requested is just the rezoning. And then if the rezoning is approved by council, it'll be subject to plating. And that plat will come forward and eventually will come to council for final, uh, the conditional final plat will come to council for final approval and then go from there.
All right. Any further questions? Are there any motions? The applicant? Is the, is the, would the applicant like to speak?
If you would like to speak, Mr. Mayor, if you'd be able to address?
Are there any questions of the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any motions to be made?
Make a motion to approve BAZ 1984, Estates at Lynn Lane, 68 acres, R2 to RS3, and abrogate BAZ 1786, one quarter to one half mile north of New Orleans Street, east of 9th Street, as recommended by Planning Commission and staff.
Second. That's a very long motion having been made.
Yes.
But a good one. Is there a roll call vote, please?
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. All right. Item G, consideration discussion and possible approval of the reappointment of Patsy Terry to the Broken Arrow Convention and Visitors Bureau Board for term beginning October 1st, 2017, expiring September 30th, 2019.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and I'll make sure this appointment language is a lot shorter for you. Last month, September 30th, we had two, a couple of CVB members whose terms expired. And as you will recall, as part of the strategic plan with the tourism asset inventory, they set forth recommendations to restructure the Convention and Visitor Bureau to include members from lodging, dining, retail, sports, attractions, and city council. Mayor Craig Thurman is recommending the reappointment of Ms. Patsy Terry as, to fulfill the retail position on the CVB. Her, if reappointed, her term would expire September 30th, 2019, and she is the owner of Arrow Flowers, so she would fulfill that retail position. And she's served on the CVB for a number of years and has done a fantastic job. So staff is recommending the reappointment of Patsy Terry to the Convention and Visitor Bureau with a term expiring September 30th, 2019. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Make a motion to approve the reappointment of Ms. Patsy Terry to the Broken Arrow Convention and Visitors Bureau Board for term expiring September 30th, 2019.
Second.
Motion second. Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. Item H, consideration discussion and possible approval of the nomination appointment of Jeff Hartman to the Broken Arrow Convention and Visitors Bureau.
It's a mouthful. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Going in the line again, the tourism recommendations, we did have an opening on the CVB, and Mayor Craig Thurman is recommending Jeff Hartman, who owns Holiday Inn Express and the Town Place Suites through SJS Hospitality in Broken Arrow, to fulfill the hotelier position within the CVB board. And this is replacing or fulfilling the expired term that was previously held by Latonya Kundif. So he is recommending that a hotelier, an existing hotelier, come onto the CVB. And his term, if appointed, would also expire September 30th, 2019.
I'd make a motion we approve the nomination and appointment of Jeff Hartman to the Broken Arrow CVB Board for a term expiring September 30th, 2019.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion second. Are there further questions or discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. Item 10A, consideration discussion and possible preview of an ordinance amending the Broken Arrow City Code, Chapter 2, Administrative Article 14, I think, Convention and Visitors Bureau. I believe that's our city attorney.
Yes, sir. As was mentioned by Ms. Hill, the last two items, the asset inventory recommended restructuring of the CVB, and so the ordinance actually effectuates those changes, moving the board from seven to nine members. The additional members are going to be appointed by the mayor, and allowing the mayor a total of four appointed positions within the CVB. It also recommended restructuring to consistent members, as you mentioned, from lodging, dining, retail, sports, attractions, and the city council, and this preview ordinance accomplishes that. We would recommend that you preview the ordinance and set it for adoption at the next meeting.
Are there any questions?
I'll make a motion we preview the ordinance and set for adoption.
Second.
Motion second having been made. Are there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. Item 11, ordinances, there are none?
Emergency supplies?
No, because it's just a preview.
Excuse me.
No ordinance, as 12 remarks and inquiries by the governing body members. Seeing none, we'll move on to item 13, remarks and updates by the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. Just real quick, there were a lot of items on the agenda tonight that staff put together to give you good information so you can make decisions about good public policy, and I just want to take the opportunity to thank the staff, the comprehensive plan, utility box wrapping, I mean, there's various types of art. And we saw that when we went to Carmel a few weeks ago, and that's something that's becoming very prevalent in our city, is the fact that there are folks who would like to see some more public art within our community, and this is a perfect example of that. There are BA Action Center, having done this once before, it takes approximately two years before you start to see that pivot of people always calling City Hall, which they will continue to do so for non-emergency issues or concerns, to make that pivot towards using the app more than they actually make the phone calls. Now, sometimes it's a generational thing where folks would rather talk to somebody than actually get online and so forth, so we will always make sure that we have processes in place to address those calls from folks that come in that would rather, rather talk to someone. The AT&amp;T agreement, and also yeoman's work by Jeanette McCormick for reaching a negotiation with our FOP, and I want to take this opportunity to, to thank the leadership team of the FOP for working with the city to reach an agreement that is mutually acceptable to both sides, and thank the council for their support of it. I also want to mention that the mayor and Norm Stevens are with the Tulsa Metro Chamber today and tomorrow in Fort Worth as a part of their best practices initiative that they try to do. Also, our chamber president, Wes Smithwick, is there. And just finally, I want to welcome Jamie Ott back. Jamie was gone for a couple of months. He was helping in Houston first, and then immediately was, was called to, to help in Florida. I want to thank him for his, his service. And also, Lee Zurich just finished his annual training with the Air Force, and he was recently promoted to E9, which is the highest rank that you can receive in the Air Force. And so I just want to acknowledge his efforts for not only serving our country, but seeking that leadership position, and to recognize him for, for his service. That's all I have. Thank you.
Congratulations, Lee.
Yeah.
There is an executive session. I would entertain a motion to, for a brief recess so we can go into BETA and BAMA.
So moved?
Second.
Motion second been made. Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. Call the meeting of the Broken Arrow Municipal Authority to order. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman?
Item 3, consideration of consent agenda.
Move for approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. There are no items removed from the consent agenda, and no public hearings, appeals, and presentations.
There's one item.
I know. It's under General Authority Business.
Oh, I thought you were moving on.
Sorry, I'm getting there.
Please move on.
Just checking.
I just, thank you. I need all the help I can get.
Thought you were moving on.
All right. General Authority Business, item A, consideration discussion of possible award of the lowest responsible bid to Crossland Heavy Contractors, Inc., and approval of an authorization to execute a construction contract for Lynn Lane wastewater treatment plant.
Good evening, Alex Mills, Engineering Director, Mr. Vice Chairman, Trustees. Here tonight to get your approval for award for this contract to help the situation at the Lynn Lane wastewater treatment plant. As you know, we're already underway on the digester rehabilitation, and this is the second and larger project that we're undertaking to help update that plant. HDR engineering was retained by BAMA to do the design, includes an entire new headworks facility. The project was advertised for bids on August 2nd and 9th. We received bids on, and they were opened on September 12th. Two bids were received, both were compliant and responsive. The bid tabulation is attached. The bids submitted were comprised of a base bid and an add alternate for some cleaning associated with the project. Crossland Heavy Contractors had the low bid with a base bid of $9,665,220, and an add alternate of $117,000 for a total bid of $9,772,220. That's well below the engineer's estimate of $11,624,060. And we are recommending award of that contract to Crossland. With your approval of the award tonight, we would anticipate mobilization in between now and the end of the year, and we're estimating an 18-month construction time on this project. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
There's a lot of people out there that have been waiting a long time.
Please approve it, yes.
Yeah. And my, and I, I love the fact that came in $2 million less than...
We were really concerned, given all the storm damage in Houston and Florida, that some of the contractors that might do this type of work would be pulled away, and we think we had fewer bids than normal because of that, but Crossland being headquartered in this area certainly helped. And I just want to say, I think you guys look every bit as good as city council.
Thank you, Alex.
What, just out of curiosity, what was the spread between the...
The higher bid was right at budget, I believe it was $11,379,000. So, quite frankly, given the situation down there, we would have been excited to be at budget or under, so this was good.
And the funding for this, from what bond issue is that?
It's actually from a loan from the Oklahoma Water Resource Board.
And I assume this will help with the odor issues, once it's completed?
It should significantly reduce the odor issues.
Well, then by all means.
I think Mr. Schwab has guaranteed it.
Oh.
Did he really?
No. I heard 95%.
I would not repeat that number. It should significantly reduce the odor problems.
Must have a lawyer somewhere in the family.
Yes.
Are there any motions to be made?
Make a motion to award the lowest responsible bid to Crossland Heavy Contractors, Inc., and approve and authorize execution of a construction contract for Lynn Lane wastewater treatment plant headworks improvements.
Second.
Motion second being made. Any further questions or discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. Item 7, executive session, there is none. One more motion?
Make a motion, adjourn.
Second.
Motion second having been made. Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes. I call this meeting of the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority to order. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman?
Next item is consideration of the consent agenda.
Make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second having been made. Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Make a motion, adjourn.
Second.
Motion second having been made. Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.[1766.01]